Welcome, everyone. I, Councilmember Tole Martz, call the Tuesday, Wednesday, August 9th, 2023 City Services, Safety and Parks Committee to order. There are multiple public comment opportunities at tonight's meeting. There's a general public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or you can make comments after the presentation and council question and answer period on tonight's agenda item. Members of the public may address council at this time, in person or virtually. Those who signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. If you're joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand. You can do that by pressing star three. If you've joined by computer or smartphone, look for a hand icon. This varies by device. One option may be to go to the participant panel and choose the raise hand icon in the lower right-hand corner. If you're in the room and did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. I'll wait a moment to see if anyone wishes to raise their hand. Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak or indicated a desire to speak this evening?
Chair Martz, no one has indicated a desire to speak at the general public comment, and we have no virtual attendees at the moment.
All right. Well, I will save my spiel about public comment to see if anyone speaks to the item that we have on this evening. As a reminder, written comments can be submitted at any time to citycouncil@isiquawwa.gov. Next item is approval of minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Chairman, I had moved to adopt the minutes from July 18th, 2023.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, that carries. Our next item is ID 1457 Affordable Housing Capital Funding and Pioneer Program. The presentation this evening is going to be from Jen Davis Hayes, our Economic Development Manager. Take it away, Jen.
... microphone. Good evening. Thank you for having me here this evening. We're here tonight to talk about two different topics, the affordable housing fund, funding that we have, as well as an update on the pioneer program that council has asked us to explore. So, as we know, affordable housing is a very complex issue, and the items we're discussing tonight are two pieces of a very large puzzle that we are, will be, we as a city, will be utilizing to increase affordable housing in our city. So again, the first one is to talk about the funding, and the second one is a pioneer project, and then, as it states in the central Isiqua Plan, is intended for initial residential projects within the plan area that are given additional incentives to balance the risk involved in being the first in the market area. So again, while it has some relation to affordable housing, it's kind of a little different as well. So, for those of you following in the PowerPoint, the packet, I moved this one slide one spot sooner, but tonight we wanted to gather feedback about our approach before we dive into the programmatic details and data estimates of the impact. So, the two distinct topics, again, do you agree with the creation of the fund? Does the approach support the policy aims the committee wishes to further? Do you agree with additional allocation to the Arch Trust Fund and our recommendations? And then, the second part about the pioneer program is, do you agree with the framework changes we're proposing tonight? So, first, talking about the funding. So, you probably remember this slide. It is a summary of what we anticipate to collect between 2021 and 2024, what we have allocated already for expenditures and the remaining balance. So, we are talking about the 2.4, approximately $2.4 million of the two revenue sources here outlined in red. The, we will, we are beginning to have internal conversations about the development bonus funding. That is eligible for open space and affordable housing, so you want to have some initial conversations and bring that back to council later on. And then, a reminder of the criteria of the funding we're talking about, because there is some pretty specific criteria. So, anything we add on to as we develop the fund will further refine the types of projects that could be funded. So, the HB 1590 is the more restrictive funding source. So, if construction or acquiring affordable housing, there's specific populations that are, have to be at 60% area median income AMI or below. HB 1406 funding does not have that requirement for the specific populations. And then, the other two requirements or criteria for the HB 1590, which is where most of our resources are, are the behavioral health-related facilities, which we are, you know, investing in the transit-oriented development, and the operations of new affordable housing or facilities providing housing-related services or evaluation and treatment centers. So, again, very specific current criteria, so we, of course, need to follow that. So, based on that criteria, we are really thinking about this on the housing continuum of what we can fund, could be anywhere between emergency shelters and affordable rental and ownership scale. So, when we were at the Committee of the Whole on May 23rd, city council members expressed interest in exploring preservation, making sure that our transit-oriented development project is fully funded, and then there was an interest in exploring an investment in the Arch Trust Fund. So, one of the questions around preservation that was asked often was about if the current, the current residents in the affordable, naturally occurring affordable housing would meet the crisis, this criteria? We don't know that, because we do not have data, income data, on private market rental things. So, if we would, if we would receive a application for this type, if we proceed with this and receive an application for preservation, we would get that information at that time, and it would be required. One of the things in talking with Arch staff said that there's, there's methods to do this, including transitioning as vacancies happen, so I know there was a concern about displacing a current resident. So, again, that is not something that all the details have been figured out, but we can, we can adjust some of those. So, our, sorry, our recommendation tonight for the affordable housing funding that we are currently collecting is to create a strategic opportunity fund and to have, make a one-time investment in the Arch Trust Fund. And so, we'll talk about each of these in more details. So, for the Strategic Opportunity Fund, this slide references the policy aims that one of our question references. So, here, we're talking about, we could focus on the priorities, as mentioned in the previous city council meeting, of preservation and transit-oriented development. And this one, not just in context to our current King County Housing Authority, TOD, but any other project that would come within a defined area of the transit center. So, again, if there's other developments that are going to meet that criteria. And then, in addition, we added community partnerships aspect. So, those are things that, looking at our city's strategic plan, two things that are mentioned in there, working with faith-based organizations, faith-based and other organizations to evaluate partnerships for housing, affordable housing development, and facilitate nonprofit organizations to locate or expand to provide needed services locally. So, both of those things already in our adopted strategic plan, that made, made a lot of sense to include as one of the priorities for this fund. So, one of the questions is for council is, is there a desire to further target populations? So, again, looking at that list of the specific populations, is there a priorization that we would like to prioritize certain populations? Something we can discuss. Yeah.
Yes. Thank you for this presentation. I had a question, if you could just put a little bit of meat on the bone, so to speak, of community partnerships. What, what are some of the examples are we, are we looking at here?
Yeah. So, it could be working with a community-based development organization, so Impact Housing. It could mean working with a faith-based organization that has land. It could mean working with a nonprofit in our community that is looking for more space and provides services to the populations that are eligible. So, you know, we did see some interest in a religious organization just on Front Street South that's looking to build affordable housing, and actually, at one time, looking to house the food bank. So, there are a lot of faith-based organizations in the city that have a lot of land, and so that would be one thing to kind of explore if there's interest from others as well.
Is that a little bit similar to the action that Bellevue took to look and evaluate their, their church properties and figure out whether or not some of that city funding for affordable housing could be used in partnership with, with those?
It sounds like, I'm not sure of the details, but it sounds like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. That's on my to-do list, to go and inquire about interest and make connections. So, again, we wouldn't be the housing developer, but making those connections where there's interest. So, as I mentioned, if the committee agrees with the creation of this fund, we'll return with more programmatic details and, including criteria, but I wanted to share a little bit of what we're looking at, what it could look like. Of course, we first need to meet the criteria of the funding source. Then, in the gray brown boxes up here are criteria that other cities' applications currently have. So, again, it's just pretty specific things when you look at requests for proposals that you want to explore. And then, the green boxes are criteria that we could either require or add additional points to further other city goals. And so, again, these are just ideas, not set in stone, and we're, you know, again, interested to see if you're, agree with this approach moving forward. So, if there was, again, a desire to, this is where it could be, where you have a specific population, if you're serving teens, you get an extra five points, or whatever it may be. So, there's a way to, again, meet our other goals within the city through this fund. And then, again, we, you know, again, we will return, further, bring back further information about metrics and criteria, so, including the, you know, the mount per, of funding per project and other, what we expect, how many units we expect to create. I did include Arch's last quarterly report that has a little bit of information about their funding, to give you an idea, because, again, not every project is a little different, and it depends on the funding source and this type of project, but just to give an idea of where, where they are looking at as far as actually per-unit costs. But we would also want to make sure that we look at for rental, if it's something around with a nonprofit affordable housing developer or for-profit housing developer, approaching those may be a little different. And if it's an ownership, making sure that we have covenant in there to have long-term affordability while allowing the current, the owners to gain some equity as well. So, again, these are things that we will further refine, but we wanted to let you know, we are thinking about these, they are important, and we haven't dove into the, into the details yet.
Question from Councilmember DeMichele.
So, would one of the eligible expenditures be helping nonprofits and faith-based organizations to do the planning for affordable housing? And I asked that question because I was on the board of the Together Center when we started that planning, and, boy, did we need, we needed a consultant to come in, and, and she did a fabulous job, but that's a commitment of funds and expertise to a project that really needs to be helpful, especially with people who are not used to doing major development projects. So, is that an eligible expense that we'd be able to look at?
And maybe I will ask, phone a friend here. So, when I look at the definition, it says construct or acquire affordable housing, usually in construct, that does include design costs. And so, I'm going to ask our guest here for Arch, Lindsay Masters, to make, provide some more context.
That's generally been the interpretation that we've received, is it, it does need to be tied to a project. So, if a faith community or another property owner wasn't really ready to commit their property to affordable housing, this wouldn't necessarily be a good source of funding for that. But there could be other sources of funding out there, and we have been working with Bellevue on some approaches like that.
We're, I saw a flash of the, there we go.
Yeah, sorry.
You might want to start that paragraph.
Okay. Yes. So, that was part one of our recommendation for the funding. Part two is making a 50% contribution of our HB 1406 allocation we'll, we'll collect through 2024, so that's an approximately a little over $300,000. And this will help to increase affordable housing resources for the region, as we heard interest in the past meeting, and aligns with other cities that are doing this. We recommend 50% this time, because we have programs that are in the pilot stage that may want to utilize this more flexible funding. So, you know, we have, we've used, we have done rental assistance prior. We also have Motel 6 Pilot going on, and there's some other programs. So, we, we want to keep some of this money for, to be able to implement some things in the, in the future years.
And Jen, did we already have out of, as part of our regular biennial budget, an Arch contribution?
Yes, and you're going to ask me what that is, and I'm going to forget. So, let me, do you know? Yeah. She probably knows. Yes.
I believe the regular contribution to the trust fund is $175,000.
So, we're currently, annually or biannually?
Annually.
Annually is 175. All right. Thank you.
Great question. Thank you. Sorry, I didn't have that to my, tip of my tongue. And so, then, just as we looked at, so Bellevue's the only other city in the East Side that's collecting the 0.1% sales tax, and they've done a similar approach to this, where they have a fund, and then they have, in the future, actually, are going to be contributing their 1406 money to Arch, as other cities are. So, again, we're, we're in a line with what Bellevue is doing, and when doing this, we'll, we're going to work very closely with Arch regarding our funding and their funding. So, in summary, our two recommendations for the funding are to create a strategic opportunity fund with a broader focus, allowing Isiqua to pursue specific housing opportunities within the community, and it provides an incentive and a tool that currently doesn't exist to develop here in Isiqua. And then, we, again, believe making a contribution to add to our current contribution for the Arch Trust Fund is a wise decision to help regional housing and/or additional housing here in Isiqua.
And can you remind me what 50% of the 2021 to 2024 HB 1406 funding?
Yes. It is a, it's just over 200, $300,000. So, again, we, we expect to collect $612,456. So, safe to say 300,000 plus.
Over per, annually or over the course of the three years?
Sorry. This is, this is, the 612,000 is for the four-year collection from 2021 to 2024.
Okay.
So, we would make a one-time contribution of 300,000, or half of this. Yeah.
Got it. So, it would be, we current, so annualized, that would be $75,000 on top of the 175 that we do currently. I was just sort of trying to, I just wanted to get an order of magnitude about what we were talking about compared to our, you know, sort of persistent contribution.
Yeah. That's great. Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah. No, these are great questions. So, and again, that's, you know, estimated, and I think that's a pretty solid number, because it's less about sales tax collection and more about pass-through money. Okay. So, switching gears a bit for the pioneer project. So, as I mentioned, this is something that in the April Committee of the Whole Meeting, there was a request to look into this more. And so, while there is an affordability component, it mentions in the central Isiqua Plan, the reason to, to implement a pioneer program is to look at a phased approach to the development to serve the needs of our growth, and it's for a certain number of units. It is not intended to set precedent for future developments, but it's really in recognition of the increased challenges of initial residential developments in this transitioning area. Again, those are all words from the Isiqua, Central Isiqua Plan, and it aligns with the desire to locate the majority of our housing growth in Central Isiqua. So, after the May meeting, met with Arch staff several times to talk about what other cities are doing and how we could approach this. And so, again, looking at, in the housing continuum, we're looking at these two boxes of affordable rental and market rate rental options. So, the recommendation we are, the options we're looking at is to, oops, I'm sorry, my mouse is going a little faster than me. So, to modify the pioneer program as outlined in the central Isiqua Plan, with some adjustments to address the barriers and opportunities for other city goal inclusion, or simply not to proceed with implementation of this plan. So, this slide outlines the elements defined in the central Isiqua Plan recommended for a pioneer program. One small change I will tell you about is in the green box, where it says the first 100 residential units in mixed-use zone. It actually said in the rest of Central Isiqua. I changed that, because we really are focused on the mixed-use zone and urban core zones for inclusionary zoning, and where we want to, we have amenity-rich products there. So, instead of allowing those 100 units to be all throughout the, the other area. So, the...
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't understand what you said.
I know. So, the, the urban core zone and the mixed-use zone are basically the areas that are, have a higher density through zoning, they have our amenities in. So, the shopping centers along Gilman, over by Costco, and East Lake San Amos. So, those are those areas. There are some other zones in Central Isiqua, like up by Newport, and then, south of Atlas, where there's more, lower-density residential. So, what I'm saying is, we're focusing this pioneer program on the urban core and the mixed-use zone. The change that I made for this green box was that the original plan 10 years ago said 100 units could be anywhere else in Central Isiqua. And so, since we've had a lot of growth in Newport, and the other areas are less about density and amenities, that's just a little tweak. So, I wanted to make sure I was being honest about, this is what it says in the Central Isiqua Plan.
Can you go back for a second to that sort of continuum of housing that you had?
Yeah.
Where you had unhoused at one end and marketed at the other? So, I'm struck by the fact that this is also the, the part of the spectrum where TOD really lies. How did we decide that this was the portion that, if, if we move forward, this, that the administration would recommend in this portion of the?
Well, this is really about where the, so the pioneer program lands. So, we're talking about 80% AMI and market rate, you know, a mixed-income building. So...
I'm sorry, it's got to be 80 to...
Well, so, we're, we're looking at 80, 80%.
Weird looking, but we didn't, we wouldn't have to.
No. So, currently, the requirement for the inclusionary zone is at 60%. So, that is, again, we'll get to our recommendation of it being 80%. In the, in the central Isiqua Plan, it does talk about increasing or the, the AMI, increasing the AMI percentages, again, to provide that incentive for the first in the market. This, again, this pioneer program isn't 100% about affordable housing only, it's about providing that incentive for the first in the market, as well as providing some...
What does first in the market mean in this context?
So, there are zero, there has been zero residential communities built in the urban core. There has been one residential community built in mixed-use zone since the plan adoption in 2012. That one is Atlas. Vale is actually in a different zone. And so, because we have, and with those two zones, we have zero affordable housing built. So, this, again, would be because nobody has built there. So, first in the market, there's always, developers or any other business always kind of sits back and watches what happens. Are you able to get the rents? Are you able to be successful in getting the market to pencil, the project to pencil out for you?
So, I'm, let me make sure I heard you right.
Yeah.
You're going to later explain why we're focusing on 80 to 100 rather than 60 to 80? Is that what I heard you say?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Yep. No. Great questions. Okay. So, what, so what we're looking at modifying, so, we're proposing that, again, we do the program as outlined in Central Isiqua Plan, and we're proposing to further adjust the development bonus requirement that's in these zones from AMI requirements from 60 to 80%, but also require the developer to choose from a menu one additional thing that helps reach another goal, a city, the city goals. So, the, so here are examples. We could have it that they increase sustainability elements of their project, connection to the natural environment, ground floor commercial space, provision of 80 to 100%, 120% AMI. Because we talk about market rate, we talked about this before, where it's not 100% in our community, market rate is not 100% AMI, it's higher than that. So, so that gets a little bit to the missing middle. And so, what we, again, what we're looking at, the reason we're looking at these things, as I mentioned before, is there hasn't been development in here, which means we're not getting affordable housing as part of our, our Central Isiqua vision. Again, focusing on urban core and the mixed use is where we already have a lot of amenities, we have the inclusionary zoning, we know that there's some challenges to building in these areas, not all parts of these areas. Again, every parcel is a little different, and that's why we want to offer some options, because maybe one place would be best to have more commercial ground floor, one other one is more connected to the, to the natural environment. But because the, the high water table, that requires structure parking to be above ground, which then has the requirement, you meet, you hit the, the height limit quicker than you would if you had below-ground parking. So, again, in this area, we're finding that's one challenge. Now, we as a city have a certain control over how development happens, right? We can't control the price of the land, the price of the construction, but the levers that we can control are, are things like this, you know, parking, density, those type of things. And so, this is why we are here, saying we believe this will help to encourage that development for the pioneer project.
Can I ask you about something that you just said?
Yeah.
You said we can't do below-grade parking because of the water.
In, in, in a lot of locations, not in every location. Yes.
Okay. Because over here, I mean, we have a wonderful jail that's below.
Yeah. So, this is central Isiqua, urban core and mixed-use area. So, so Atlas did do have, you know, one ground floor underneath, or one floor underneath. Other developments that had, so the TOD originally looked to doing that, and they decided they couldn't, they needed to be above ground because of the water level.
So, it's variable in the valley?
Yes. So, as you get towards the lake, you can imagine that's where the area, that it's more challenging. So, if you think about the recent development at Costco and other places, they didn't go underground, they went above ground.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. So, again, this is where, you know, development gets challenging, because every parcel has a little bit different.
Councilmember DeMichele.
So, when we talk about the pioneer project, are we developing a context for just a single project? And I think we kind of know which project that is from previous comments, but, or are we putting together a context that would be applied to several developments?
So, going back to the slide here, so, it's not developed, we've heard from developer of a certain project, and this is, this idea, though, again, was, was in the central Isiqua Plan in 2012, before any, any thought about this other project existed. So, it would be for the fir, this is, again, how it's written, so we could change this, the first 200 residential units in the urban core and the first 100 residential units in mixed-use zone. So, we could adjust those numbers, we could put a, you know, deadline of five years, I mean, so there's ways, again, that this isn't, again, this isn't something that's meant to be forever, but it's meant to, to help pull one of those levers to get some development happening where it isn't happening, so we can get some more housing. So, why make changes? Right? So, we have talked to some other cities and that, heard from, actually, the Planning Policy Commission has heard from developers as well, that 80% AMI with the MFTE has been successful in, in getting development to happen. You know, we, again, because the recommendation is looking at changing the development bonus affordable requirements as well, we feel that we can ask for something in addition. So, the examples that I had, again, are merely examples, but we have, you know, the Isiqua Climate Action Plan, the Parks Plan, the city's housing strategy, that all can, we can pull goals in to help, to help us reach those goals by an additional requirement for the developers. So, we're not giving away things completely, we're asking for something in return for that change. One of the things in the, in the proposal is to adopt the multifamily tuck exemption for the pioneer project. This could be a full, a full meeting conversation, and we're more than welcome to come back and have this. I did include the MFTE 101 PowerPoint deck that Arch has provided, and they're, again, one willing to come back. This is a tool that Arch does support, and you can see that 55 cities in Washington State have adopted this. We have adopted this, but it's very specific for the TOD project at the TOD site. So, high-level overview, it is, you would still collect property tax on land in the commercial portion of the property, but on none of the residential property for either the eight, 12, or 20 years. The eight-year does not require an affordable component from the state, but you, we could, we could require that. The 12-years requires 12, I'm sorry, 20% of the units must be affordable, and the 20-years requires ownership. So, there's also recently added into the MFTE legislation, an ability to add another 12 years to the, either the eight or 12. So, again, lots of detail is here. I know that council has heard about the MFT before, and we can definitely provide more information, but this is, again, part of that pack, packet we're suggesting. So, in, in summary, we are recommending to create the pioneer program... Program as outlined in the Central Issaquah Plan from 2012, adding on that we're changing the affordability requirements for the density, I'm sorry, development bonus portion, changing the AMI from 60 to 80%, and requiring an additional benefit as defined by a menu of services. So we believe that this is going to help to contribute to the vision of the Central Issaquah Plan, our city goals, and really move us forward in getting some more housing where we have amenities, jobs, stores, transit. So looking at next steps, we are willing to come back to the September 19th meeting with, again, more refined information. The October 9th Committee as a whole has been planned for the bi, I guess it would be a biannual update of affordable housing as a whole. We were, again, here in April, so would also include a presentation from Kristen Leeson in Planning and Monica Negrela from Human Services. So thought it might be great to come back to this committee prior, but we're open to that timeline. And then I, just repeating the slides here for the questions or the recommendations, I have both, all these slides at the end, so I can keep whatever slide up as requested. Thank you.
So do we have other questions? Councilmember Joe?
Thank you. The MFTE can sometimes be seen as a big break for the developer. They get, you know, a break on their property tax bill, and the city residents end up paying a little bit higher on their overall property tax. Up in the city of Stehomish, now, these figures are going to be different, but the Stehomish County Assessment Office did a study, and for every $1 million of exemptions approved, the value of a home in, the value home in Stehomish, which is about $469,000, saw an estimated increase in their taxes of about 50 cents per year on their property tax bill. Do you know if that is similar in King County, or are you planning to get that information to us based on some of the information and feedback you get tonight?
So I'm going to pass to phone a friend here at Arch, and so thank you for that question, because that is a misconception that it's a big impact.
Yeah, that's certainly part of the analysis that Arch often does when a jurisdiction is considering adopting MFTE, is looking at, it's kind of a two-part dynamic. There's a tax shift and then a tax foregone. One project alone has a pretty nominal, you know, negligible, I would say, effect on a tax bill taken as a whole county. When you combine all the jurisdictions programs together, you can measure that and kind of see that there is an impact on the whole. So that would be information we could bring back.
Thank you. I certainly would like us to have that information out there so that we can have those conversations with our citizens when we get some inquiries as to how it's going to impact the individual homeowner here in town as prices are increasing. If we can say that it's 50 cents or under a dollar or what have you, I think that that gives us some credence or at least some viability toward considering the MFTE on a wider basis. Thank you.
Other questions? Do you have anything else to present to us?
I do not.
All right. Well, then, at this point, I think this is where we're going to return to the possibility of public comment. So I will, again, say if anybody wants to indicate an interest in speaking either here with us or on the phone pressing star three or on your computer or smartphone, raising the hand icon, now would be a great time to do that. And I'll say again, if you were in the room and did not sign up, I'll ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. Has anyone raised their hand? We have several in the audience. Do we have anybody online as well?
Chair Martz, we have nobody online, and Brian Runberg had signed up prior to speak during this public comment period.
All right. Well, we'll start with folks who have signed up. I will say, citizen comments are an important part of the public process. We take them seriously, factor them into the decisions we make. Please direct comments to the whole council and not individuals. While this is not a question-and-answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. When recognized, if you're at home, unmute your microphone, or if you're here, step up to the lectern, state your name, address, and relationship with the city. Speak clearly and pause frequently. Limit comments to five minutes. If you are attending virtually and do not respond, well, we don't have anyone participating virtually, so worry about that. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disrupted behavior will not be... And you said there was one person who signed up to speak. Let's start there.
Correct. Brian Runberg from the Runberg Architecture Group. Brian, can you press the button on the microphone so that the red light comes on? There you go.
Thank you. Brian Runberg with the Runberg Architecture Group. With me also is Jesse Clausen, as well as Connor Hanson from SRM Development.
Yeah, sorry. We decided to do this as a team. Sorry about that. Switching up a little bit. I represent Runberg and SRM, who does have the interest in the 1085 Lake Drive property. Obviously, we're not doing this to just be involved in our project, though we are very interested in the Pioneer Project for this project. This isn't intended to be a forever solution. This is something that is really to get, as Jen said, development going in the near term, since the Central Issaquah Plan has been in for 11 years now, and you've only seen really one project. The site of our site, I guess, it's right next to Costco. It's right next to a Future Light Rail Station. And we really appreciate the city of Issaquah looking at this. I think you're, there are other cities who are looking at Pioneer Projects, but you're a little bit ahead of the curve in that, you know, you're doing it because you're like, gosh, let's get some development like other cities are. So we really appreciate this. The time really to act is now, or this year if you can. If we started planning for this project today and submitted plans to the city, et cetera, this project would not, people would not be living in a building for five years. That's how long it takes. So getting things going now is very important. Brian, do you want to?
Yep. Thank you. Next slide, please. So as Jesse pointed out, yes, we started on this project about a year ago, trying to analyze it between SRM and ourselves. Just a little bit of background and context of who we are, SRM and Runberg Architecture Group. We have a 30-year collective or combined experience in urban housing. We've got roughly 20 TOD projects that either designed or under construction. So we are expertise in this type of development. And also, just want to point out that the intent of this is a long-term lasting hold. This isn't an investment to turn, but we intend to be long-term investors in this project for the, for a long term there. Next slide. So our firm, I know this has been cited in some of the previous conversations, the interest in sustainability. Our firm has led the nation in the last 10 years in multifamily housing, as far as the most high-performing, sustainable housing projects within the United States. So we've got a good, solid reputation for that, that can incorporate. That was one of Jen's comments about one of the boxes there. But is also making good design and good urban spaces, which is aligns with the Central Issaquah Plan. Next slide, please. And I will have Connor, who's an expert in the affordable housing, kind of explain this next slide.
I don't know if I'm an expert, but I've been developing affordable housing in the region for the last 15 years. I specialize in 50 to 100% AMI housing. So I'm here to support what Jen just proposed today of switching the mandatory zone, inclusionary zone from 60 to 80%, and also just be a resource to answer any questions if they come up about how 50 and 60% AMI housing is financed. But I can do a really quick 101. This is a slide, this slide is taken from a report that Eco Northwest put out. Affordable housing developers, we all have the same costs and the same prices for land unless we're getting it for free from somebody. But our rents are capped, right? And so we leverage debt, just like a market rate developer does, but the rents are lower. And so there's always, oftentimes, the gap that has to be plugged, which is what Arch does for these projects. So I'm here to just comment that if a developer, a market rate developer is forced to put 50 and 60% AMI housing in their projects with no offsetting compensation, like a tax abatement, it creates a lot of challenges to finance those projects. Most, if not all the 50 to 60% AMI projects we finance are utilized the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program, which is a federal program where Fortune 500 companies invest equity into these projects in exchange for a corporate tax deduction. So that's free money coming into those projects to offset the loss in the debt that we're able to leverage. So again, I'm here to support the move to MFT and 80%. It's been one of the state's most successful programs. And I think it's important to remember that all housing is created is helping the problem of affordable housing. So anything we can do to get any housing created is going to, in the long term, help address our affordable housing problem.
Thank you. Thank you.
Does that mean our time's up?
Yeah.
Yep. Three more slides. Councilmember Joe, I, no, no, I'll let you go. We're less formal than in a regular meeting.
Jessica, Jessica Clausen?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi.
So we work together on the East Side Housing Roundtable?
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
Yes.
Fantastic. I've never met you in person.
Nice to see you. I know, it's so weird. Hi.
It's always been on TV. Well, so I'll just disclose to my colleagues that I'm part of the East Side Housing Roundtable in Bellevue, associated with my position, my regular day-to-time position. So we work on increasing the supply of housing. It can have an affordable element to it, but just to let you know that Jesse and I are often on phone calls for the East Side Affordable Housing Roundtable.
Talking about all of this stuff. Yes, exactly.
All right. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
I'll ask if anyone else in the public wishes to speak, and I see Ms. Triple.
Good evening, councilmembers. It's great to see you tonight. I'm Christy Triple. I work with Rowley Properties, and the address is 1595 Northwest Gilman Boulevard, Suite 1 here in Issaquah. So the recommendation makes great sense that has been put forward. Saff Report was really well done. So I want to kind of speak to tonight's agenda item, but also from a bigger picture. I was thinking about what I wanted to say this evening and decided, let's just cut to the chase. The Econ Northwest report that was done as part of the Happy Grant was spot-on, and I don't think that was any news to us. So I want to ask you to think bigger and to go bigger, because we do need to increase the amount of housing supply if we're going to catch up and we're going to begin to make things more affordable from housing accessibility and affordability here in the city. So I say, let's make a difference. Please expand the MFTE program for 12 years at 80% AMI, at least in the urban core, if not further, and provide for a 20-year extension to encourage affordable housing ownership and accessibility. The one pilot project that was buried deep in the Central Issaquah Plan that's just recently been discovered, I don't think it's enough to help us catch up as a community. I think back many, many years ago, when Tola first joined council, and we talked about what does housing cost? And back then, it was for new development, $100 more per door per month to build here in Issaquah as opposed to as Bellevue. And our residents at the time wanted bigger space and more amenities. So projects back then were hard. It's even more difficult now in today's climate. So I also think the TOD, it's a great way to model by example for the city to take on that project. But again, not enough affordable housing for our community. And the solution is partnership, right? We saw that worked up in the Issaquah Highlands, and we know that it takes a cast of many to facilitate positive change. So I think we need to stimulate development as a community that enables those multifamily and ownership options. And if the city wants to see future housing, affordable housing in the 30 to 50% AMI, maybe strategically allocate public land to serve as a base, and then couple with governmental grant funding, because private industry alone cannot meet that demand without a lot of change. So housing in this sector does need fostering. And then lastly, I just want to thank you in advance for your consideration and your commitment, because affordable housing aids in what fosters a vibrant community and ensures a brighter future for all residents. And developers would like to help provide that, but we need assistance in doing. So thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight, and thanks for all that you do.
Sure. Please come to the microphone.
My name is Jim Rivard. Could we have that with SRM Development? I'm just going to finish here really quickly, if I may. Could we have that, the PowerPoint? Thank you. No problem. I'll make a comment before we get there. Just really two quick comments to finish what Connor was discussing momentarily, or a second ago. When it comes to 50 and 60% housing, the, it requires federal financing or governmental financing and tax credit to do that. But there's also a gap. And so it takes either, and one of two things, either donation of land from the community and/or additional gap funding. And so you can see in a market like Seattle, where they've created a tremendous amount of 50 and 60% housing, and they have that gap funding because they've been collecting funds to do that for years, they can provide that gap funding, because you can't afford to build that, there's a gap, right? You can't charge those rents and pay for the building. So the city or some other gap funder has to participate to do that. Bellevue, on the other hand, has not collected those funds. And so you've seen basically zero units created at the 50 to 60% level with all the development there, because there's no gap funder. And that's something they're focusing on. So when you go to 50 to 60%, it just becomes untenable. I mean, it's just not going to work. Whereas you see, both cities also have 80% of AMI with tax abatement. And you can read the Houston Sound Business Journal just last week, where Bellevue is now creating a lot more 80% units because of that tax credit where it wasn't happening before. So that's really what we're targeting here. You're talking apples and oranges. A market rate developer can't build 50 and 60% and build a project unless the city wants to, or somebody wants to pony up millions of dollars. But that's really the point. If we go to the very last slide, we can skip the rest of them, which is the affordability impact. Today, one more back, I'm sorry, some numbers. High, high level here. If you're building a project and you have a total cost of X, you need to build to a certain return to make it viable. And you look at the first slide, which is the 50 to 60%, 12 and 1/2%, it shows a return of 5.33, which is untenable. It's below cost today. And so you're immediately driving your project, you're building it for more than it's worth. You know, we're in a difficult market right now. But if you look at option two, that's becoming more, becoming a more viable project, where the incomes are, the rents are at 80% restricted there with the tax credit, or the tax abatement, excuse me. So that becomes a viable project. So that's the same numbers for the project from a cost standpoint, from a market rate standpoint. It's just adjusting the affordable project units in it. And so you can, it's a really simple analysis. We can provide backup on it if you'd like to see it. But it takes it from not being a viable project to nothing's getting built, to, okay, we can get something built and we can provide some units at 80%. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Everybody who's here has commented. Clerk, I'll ask if there's any one has joined online and the possibility of any other commenters online before we get into deliberation.
Chair Martz, we have no virtual attendees.
Jen, I have a question. So in this conversation about, we've had several comments about 80% AMI and 60% AMI. For as long as I've been on council, I don't think we ever thought that you could magically get the same amount of 60% AMI as you can 80% AMI. I think we always thought that you could get about half as much 60% AMI as you could 80% AMI, roughly. It doesn't exactly pencil exactly at AMI, but something like that, right? So, you know, I'm a little confused, because it seems like there's an option in this whole thing of going to 80%. I continue to be stuck on the fact that, can you remind me, TOD, what the fractions are on TOD?
Of the...
Where the targets are?
The tiers?
Yeah, the tiers.
Yeah, it's pulling back some memories. So there is some 30% because they have vouchers. So again, King County has them 30. So again, King County Housing 30 has access to different funding that no other local organization does. And then they're looking at 40% and 60%, and then 80% as part of the MFT. So it is a much broader spectrum, but again, they, they wouldn't have that 30% if they didn't bring vouchers into the program.
Yeah, yeah, I'm really just stuck trying to understand, you know, does the market want more at 80% or does the market want a smaller amount at 60%?
Oh, uh-huh.
That, that, just, this whole idea of moving the bar from 60 to 80, you know, I get that you get less at 60% than you do if, if, for, for a same investment, either the investment by a developer or investment by the city in terms of forgone revenue, right? You get a smaller amount at a lower AMI percent, but I'm still, I'm, I'm stuck that in the olden days, we used to sort of try to analyze what the city actually needed versus what we had, right? So that when, if we said, let's move from 60 to 80, we had something to base that on.
So right now, 60 is required. And it's, the percentage is required for the full, so it wouldn't be less units at 60 or less unit, more units at, at 80. It's still 12.5% if you're in the urban core of your whole, so let's just pretend it's, you know, 100.
The requirement is 12.5%.
For inclusionary zoning, and then there's an additional requirement of more affordable housing if you do the, then the development bonus, which again, it goes up when you're above the height limit of 60 feet or 80 feet. So it, it quickly adds up then. And that's, that is why we're suggesting to do, for a pioneer project, to, again, pull the levers that we can, see. And, and as some of the commenters mentioned, there was, there has been some look at the, at this inclusionary zoning through the Eco Northwest for the Housing Action Plan Implementation Grant, the Happy Grant. And as part of a next step, our planning department is going to be diving into that a little bit more. And we're looking at, we're going to be looking at MFT, we're going to be looking at inclusionary zoning and the development bonus program to kind of really, again, see how you move all those levers and parking, right? So there's, again, lots of levers that, okay, do you increase the percentage? Does that make it easier or decrease the percentage? Does that make it harder? So, so that's, again, we'll, more details will be following for longer-term changes to our code. This pioneer project is looking at other pioneer projects, looking at the 80% with MFT, which has been standard and has been successful in other cities. So that's why we're looking at the 80% rather than 60%. Again, because that exists currently, so.
I have a non-AMI question now. So we had, we had members of the public present some, some very pretty pictures. You know, we have had developments in the past in the city that came in and had very pretty pictures, and then the actual development wound up looking quite different than the pictures. So, I mean, these pictures are gorgeous. I, I mean, I want, in high density, I want what Bothell has, and I want what Woodinville has, right? This, this looks like that. Do we have the ability as we move forward to enforce the things that we like as part of this program? Because what I don't, I mean, I don't think there's anything wrong with Atlas, but Atlas doesn't look like the downtown Bothell that I love and the downtown Woodinville that I love, right? They, they look like this. So, so how do we make sure we know if we make an investment in forgone revenue, what we're going to get?
So we, since the time of the development of Atlas, we had a moratorium, and we developed and adopted a design manual, an architectural manual that is very prescriptive. So it will, it has some teeth in it of what needs to be done. We've also done some updates to other components of the code at that time. And then during our Title 18 update.
I'm pretty sure Atlas was after the moratorium.
It was, it was before.
Okay.
Yeah. I remember that time a little bit. Yeah, so it, so actually, the.
And again, I don't mean to diss on Atlas.
No, 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 no.
But it, it, it doesn't look like.
And so part of it is, again, they were first in the market. There were so many developers that were talking to me that, we'll see if they can get that market right. We'll see if they can actually make this pencil. And so people were really watching, and I understand that the pictures look different than what was implemented, but, and then again, that's why we have an architectural manual now and some other details. In Bothell, for instance, that's, that is a very different field, because city owned a lot of that land and then can discount and ask for more. So that's one of the things, as we're looking at this pioneer program, if we end up asking for 12 other things, it may not be used, right? And it may, it may further delay some development happening in these two areas that we want to see some housing to start. Again, it's a phased approach. We're not looking at thousands of units tomorrow. We know that there's been a, a lot of development on the fringes of Central Issaquah, so Newport Way has really developed again, but where we thought 10 years, 12, 11 years ago, that development would want to be, hasn't come there yet. Yeah.
Thank, thank you for answering my questions. Councilmember Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that the last speaker talked a little bit about a, a land grant or a city contribution of property coming in. I seem to remember that Bellevue did, was considering some type of land trust recently, but they needed some help with legislation from Olympia. And I was just wondering if you could take a look at that and see if you can bring back a little bit of information on that topic? What is preventing a city from doing some type of land trust for affordable housing? Is there something in Olympia that needs to be changed or altered that we can talk to our legislative representatives about? I don't know all the details, but certainly would like to hear a little bit more about that going forward. Just in.
Councilmember Joe, it appears that our guest, my caller friend, actually knows some more details. If you'd like that question answered now?
If I'm understanding your question right, part of what the city of Bellevue was hoping to do was to get some state funding for, to support land acquisition. The city can directly acquire property and has acquired property and is thinking about that as a long-term strategy, but it's very expensive to acquire property in Bellevue, also in Issaquah, so it really is about financing. There are existing land acquisition programs that we use all the time to get affordable housing projects done, but we're trying to grow that resource.
Thank you very much for, for that. In the before times, in the olden days, we took a look at, even before I was on council, we took a look at all the property in town that we owned, and we found a couple of small slices of property that we had. And as I understand it, they figured out a way to work with Habitat for Humanity and built a few, I want to say two or three affordable housing units just south of town along Newport. And so that's just an opportunity that I think we need to continue to be aware of and continue to explore, whether or not there are these small pieces of land that we can work with a Habitat or other nonprofit to, to move that ball just a little bit down the, down the field and get a couple of affordable housing units. Certainly, it's different from what we're discussing tonight, but an opportunity that I know the administration is probably consistently looking at along the way, just as a, as an option. Thank you.
So do we want to go through the questions in order? Have a sort of a, yeah, that's, that's what I mean, one at a time. Do we do that? Does the committee agree to creation of Strategic Opportunity Fund provide project funding? Councilmember Joe, you look ready to pounce on this one?
Yes, I think it's a good idea to create the Strategic Opportunity Fund, excuse me, and we'll have to be a little bit careful in terms of making sure we adhere to the rules, and there might be some other guardrails that we'll put on there, just to make sure that we are using the funds, the taxpayer funds appropriately along the way, but I do support it as an idea going forward.
Councilmember DeMichele.
Yeah, I think this is a great idea, and I've been looking for this kind of, of an idea coming before us, and I, I'm glad that it's here. I did mention, and I'm, I'm still concerned about the barriers to some of our smaller organizations and our faith-based organizations and nonprofits who just don't have the bandwidth or the expertise. What can we do, perhaps not from this fund, but through other activities to support them so that they can take advantage of the funding that's available here? A lot of them are just not prepared to do that, because they don't have the expertise in the planning and design arena to get to take advantage of the Strategic Opportunity Fund. But I think it's a great idea that we would have it available, and I think we should good, move forward with it. And then think carefully about how we might support, I think it's an equity issue, actually. How do we support those groups that might need that extra support to get to the level where they could take advantage of it?
So can you remind me of, of the pieces that we're talking about today? They, some of them sort of blur together. Can you tell me again, this is, this part is, does what, would do what?
So it, looking at, focus on the priorities of preservation, TOD, community partnerships. And again, these are ideas of criteria that we would look at.
So this would, so this would be money that would be set aside to basically supplement development in those areas that met certain criteria?
Yeah, so it'd be like a request or proposals process. We work very closely with Arch. Again, the city of Bellevue is doing this as part of their, they have much more funding, but they're doing, part of that is collecting RFPs from developers and projects. And so we would work with Arch to make sure that we're aligned and are able to leverage funding as much as possible. So again, we're looking at about 2 point, yeah, 2.4 million dollars at this point. And if, if this is, looks like it's gaining ground, we can, our future revenues, we can decide at that time how to invest that in a future budget conversation.
Okay. I, I mean, I, I turn my comments to my fellow councilmembers. I have a certain heartburn in, in all this, and it's because on the time scale that I've been on council, I mean, there's been a blip in recent years where we have not had much development in the valley, but I've seen an immense amount of development in the valley since I got on council 14 years ago. It was huge for the first seven, eight years. Arch was seven years ago. And, and so there's been, you know, there's been this bit of a, of a hiatus. It's hard for me to tell how much of that is COVID and whatnot, but I, I, you know, I want to see the right development come into the valley. Development will come. Over the 14 years that I've been here, I, I've seen it. Last few years, like I said, to me, are, are a blip that, that has, that has many possible causes, but I look at the fierce growth in the next city over from us. As soon as, as soon as development hits High Point, not High Point, East Gate, right? There'll be spillover into our area, and things that are marginally viable will become extremely viable. So I'm, I'm just careful about, I, I don't want to see development for development's sake. I want to see development that makes sense, whether that's mixed use, whether that's some 80%. You know, I, I think moving from just blanket, going from 60 to 80 is a giveaway, right? It's just, it's a, it's a, it's a requirement that we had that we're just going to loosen, because we want to see the development. So I, I want to be careful. I, I don't want to see more development just for the sake of saying yay, we built another 500 apartments, because we've, Issaquah, over the 14 years that I've been on council, we've had, we've had tons of development. We've transformed the city, and more development will come in the valley in our lifetimes. It'll be profitable and people will do it. So I'm, I'm cautious about, you know, somebody mentioned the term guardrails. I would, I really want to see some guardrails. I would rather see us wait five or 10 years to get more development than to just get more boxy apartments in the valley at market, which is what people want to build, because it's really profitable. So that's my concern in all this. This is not to say that I would vote against something in full council, but I'm just cautious, and I want to make sure that we get something that really benefits our community. This is going to, there will be a cost associated with putting more housing in the valley. Lord knows we already have enough traffic. Lord knows we don't have enough transit right now. We don't have enough schools in the valley right now. All these things are super expensive. So when, when more development comes, I want to make sure it's in a form that benefits the folks in this region and serves a good need. So I'm, you know, I'm hearing tonight sort of a, we should have development because development, more housing is good. And over the timeline that I've been on council, we've done more than our fair share. So that's my, and I'm just wanting to share that with, with the two of you. Barb?
Well, I will respectfully disagree. Thank you for, for that input and for what you've had to say. I guess I'm at the other end of the pole. I am frustrated by the fact that we have not seen any significant development in the Central Issaquah Plan, and I am frustrated by the fact that we haven't seen affordable units. I don't think it's a giveaway to move from 60% to 80%. I think it's working in reality with developers who are saying to us, the 60% doesn't pencil out, and the 80% does. And the 80% is important. Those are teachers and firefighters and construction workers and clerks. The 80% is important, too. And I will go back to what I think is the strategy for the 60%, but we're talking about the, this, this now. And I think the 12-year MFT is a reasonable proposal. And again, we're trying to encourage, and I don't think it's, I mean, we have design standards, those will, all of that will come back to us, but right now, we're just at the big concept stage of, we really need affordable housing. I cannot tell you, but every single day, I talk to somebody who has got a story about how their kids couldn't move here, how they couldn't move here, how they couldn't find a place to retire to. Affordable housing is a huge issue, and so I'm not looking at it as development for the sake of development. I think it's, it's totally a community need that is just crying out for some changes to what we're doing. So I would support all of the Pioneer Project recommendations that were put in front of us, and I think that the developers have made a really good case for moving from 60% to 80% in that Pioneer Project pilot. And I think, let's try this and see how it works. And I hear what you're saying. I too have concerns. That particular project that we discussed is, I heard from so many people who hated the blue and the white and the, you know, at that particular location. So I think we do want to be sure that we use the new standards that we have and that we have a tighter grasp on what it eventually looks like. But I don't want to wait another 10 years to see whether some private developer comes along and is able to build a development. I want the city to be open to reporting these projects going forward, because we need housing. I just think it's just such a clear human need that we have in, in Issaquah. So on the 60% front, again, going back to our faith-based communities and nonprofits, they are all built around the mission of supporting people in poverty and low-income people. Those are the people who are going to be evangelists for those 60% developments. And, and that's what you need. You need, you need people who are so devoted and so, you know, wanting to do those projects that they're going to make sure that they work well. And you need people who are really, really incentivized and engaged in that process. So there's, there are reasons why that is, the 60% is, is not affordable for most developers. It's not just a tax thing, it's, it's a lot of different issues. So anyway, I am supporting the Pioneer Projects recommendations that were brought before. I disagree.
City Administrator Bob Kowits.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. A few clarifying comments and thoughts. The administration is not here tonight proposing development just to develop. What we do feel is that there's a significant amount of money that we've collected from various sources. We have not engaged the council in conversation about the disposition of these funds, partially because of COVID, partially because of the commitment the mayor had to the Transit Oriented Development Project, along with the city council. And until we knew the parameters of that, we did not want to put anything on the table for discussion. So with the parameters of that known, we just feel it's appropriate for these policy discussions. If they take two weeks, five weeks, six months, great, whatever you think is appropriate. When looking at the questions before you, we feel strongly that the Arch Trust Fund dollars, we feel very comfortable with that. We hope the council agrees, and that money then can be put in Arch's hands to move forward. The Pioneer Program Initiative, certainly a lot of discussion this evening, continued discussion, there is a developer would like to use it. So I think if we can bring those discussions to a conclusion soon, that makes sense. Um, so I think if we can bring those discussions to a conclusion soon, that makes sense. Uh, the, the Strategic Opportunity Fund, there is no particular rush. Uh, we want you to have the, do what you want it to do. And if that's going to take one more meeting of discussion or three more meetings of discussion, some additional community outreach, that's great. Um, and we can continue to have that be on a separate path, but the money is in the bank. We feel obligated to bring the issues to you for discussion. Um, and again, when you look at what's before you this evening, I think the trust fund, hopefully is straightforward, moving forward with Pioneer Programs, straightforward, but additional discussions on how you would wish to use the Strategic Opportunities Fund, that can take whatever time the council thinks is appropriate.
Thank you. So I want to clarify one. So I, I have focused on workforce housing since the day that I first ran in 2009 and I have been a fierce advocate of transit oriented development since, I mean, there was a point where there were like two of us that supported it on council. I'm, I'm just saying that we have, we've had a lot of projects that have had like 12% uh, you know, at 80% AMI. There's lots of stuff in the Highlands that's there. I, I want to make sure that what we build is good in the community. And the goal isn't just to build more housing, it's to build housing that, for instance, also has services and has, you know, park amenities that are good and has all the stuff that is important to us. So to me, 12 and a half percent at eight, at 80% AMI is like the floor to a conversation. It's not the ceiling to a conversation. So I, you know, I don't know how it somehow became that I was against, uh, affordable housing. I just want to make sure that we get housing that benefits our community when, when it's said and done. And I would, I guess my point is that, um, I, I want to go at the pace that makes sure we get the housing that benefits. And it isn't, the goal to me isn't just to, to build more housing, it's to build the right housing. So hopefully we'll be able to, as we move forward, I'm really just signaling that those guardrails are really important to me about what we get because every single time we build, we say, oh yes, now we know what we're going to get. And in the end, we don't really get what we get, want because, you know, if, if a developer has two options and this option gets them $5 per square foot and this option gets them $6 per square foot, they'll go for the one that gets them $6 per square foot. That's how the world works. So I, I just want to be, I just want to be cautious and measure twice and cut one, you know, as we go to spend these important dollars. That's all I'm really saying. I believe I, I agree with both of you that we should do something like this. I'm just saying that I, those guardrails are super important, having seen a number of times we didn't get the public benefit that we thought we were getting. We can, shall we move on? Does, well, I, do you have your, councilmember Joe?
We can go ahead and move on. I, I, I think we've.
Yeah, killed the horse on that one. All right. Uh, what policy aims does the committee wish to further with the Strategic Opportunity?
I'll go ahead and go first on that one. I, I think, um, you know, we need to be cautious in terms of what additional requirements we're putting onto, uh, a developer, but if items make sense, uh, for instance, if we are building on the valley floor and there's an opportunity to connect to, uh, a creek trail, uh, that makes sense and, and it enables us to, uh, build on the concept of the green necklace or having opportunities to access the creek all the way from Lake Samamish to our, to our furthest southern border and that can be worked in there. That certainly makes sense without, uh, putting a, a huge cost on a developer. I would also like us to continue to explore, um, opportunities for healthcare, uh, for people that, uh, live in the units that we're building. Uh, the TOD, for instance, has in its concept, uh, some of the healthcare amenities there so that people don't have to travel all the way to Bellevue. So people don't, uh, need to go across town but can, um, you know, have a reasonable walk from, uh, the bus stop to that health facility or if they live in that facility, come downstairs and, and, and get, uh, healthcare there. An ounce of prevention in terms of, of catching something early for everybody makes a huge difference in the healthcare costs that we have overall for, um, our city. Um, so if we can find opportunities to have, uh, uh, unique services that, uh, are not elsewhere, uh, but give people an opportunity to have a, um, walkable community and get to these, um, services without having to get into a car or they can take a bus in, in city or take our dial-up ride that we went through last night, uh, last Monday, um, to, to get to these, uh, facilities. I think that's, that's a great opportunity there. Also for our nonprofits, I think that, um, our youth often have, um, challenges, uh, in terms of, uh, perhaps being homeless or being unhoused. And if there are opportunities for us to, um, explore shelter for our youth that are homeless, I think that's a, a good opportunity to use these funds. Our closest overnight shelter is in Kirkland or Auburn or Seattle. And I really don't want our young people going to Seattle. Um, we have found that if people, uh, have the support of their school and their counselor and their teachers here in town and they're able to live in town, it makes a difference in the opportunities for success for our young people. So I'll throw that out there as a, as, as another, uh, wishlist for me, but, um, certainly those are some of the, the ideas that I have at this point. Thank you.
Councilmember DeMichele.
Uh, thank you. Uh, I think my top, um, you know, if we're, we're talking about what policy arenas we'd like to have, um, my top thing would be equity and I think, um, uh, working through the Equity Board that we have for the city, uh, they bring a lot of, uh, expertise on that, I think would be a really good thing. Make sure that, um, they have a, a look at what's, what's happening there. Um, and then the other thing, I totally agree that, uh, connection to, uh, open spaces, especially if we're housing families with children, um, that it's, uh, if, if we can build in open spaces that are usable for young families, uh, I think that would be my second highest priority in terms of policies, uh, with, with that regard. So those will be the two that I would pick out.
Thank you. Um, in this conversation, I think, uh, networked to, uh, park amenities, um, the valley floor is large and want to make sure that as development happens, uh, families have, have access to get to our great parks, uh, system. And you don't want a sort of a concrete, uh, you know, concrete desert, uh, as, as people get, as well as, uh, providing, uh, conduit for wildlife to get through the valley. That would be a priority for me. So we move on to the, with the third question is, uh, Arch, I believe? Does the committee agree with the recommendation on additional allocation to Arch Trust Fund?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMichele?
I, I totally agree with Councilmember Joe, yes. Um, and thanks for the report from Arch and, uh, the list of projects that, that, uh, were funded and, uh, the list of projects that could be funded. And, uh, I think this one-time addition to our already standing, um, contribution is very warranted and, um, if we help, uh, affordable housing across the east side, that helps us as well. So absolutely, I think that is a, a great use of our funds.
I'm a yes also. I will say, amazingly, the 14 years that I've been on council exactly coincides with the gap in major projects from Arch here because YWCA started right before I got on council, uh, like six months before I got on council. So I would love to see, uh, Arch with a major project back. You know, we're happy to help with regional solutions. We get that our investment helps, you know, investing regionally benefits us as well, but, uh, I would love to see Arch back in a major way sometime soon. Question four, does the committee agree on framework changes as recommended to Pioneer Program? Councilmember Joe?
Thank you. I think Councilmember Barb DeMichele, uh, said it best that she does agree with all the framework changes. Um, I think that we have an opportunity to, um, think a little bit outside the box and, and look at MFT in a way that could have the extension on there, that makes it, uh, something that, uh, could work for our community. I think that, uh, the MFT in particular spreads the, um, the decision to have affordable housing to every property owner in town rather than have it focus on, uh, one segment of the population or one particular industry. Um, and, and that's the kind of, uh, um, community agreement that I think we need to have, that we understand that, uh, affordable housing is needed, more housing is needed and we, uh, want to have, uh, that, uh, tax burden spread over the entire community so that it is quite small, but in the aggregate, it's quite significant to, to move the ball forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember DeMichele.
Yeah, I think I've spoken to, to the proposal for the Pioneer Project. Um, I am very supportive of it and hope that it's, uh, able to go forward. And I think there was a statement in there about, um, I think it was in the handout that we had, that it takes maybe five or six years for a project to actually come to market. And, uh, so, um, that's my experience as well is, is that's about what it takes. So, um, let's get going, let's get going. And I would love to have you come back with, uh, more defined, uh, program for us to, to actually approve. Thank you.
So, um, uh, I'm a, we'll see. Somebody said a camel is a horse designed by committee. Uh, there are a lot of facets that go into a development in terms of what municipalities ease up on regulations, um, to get what benefits. I, I think it's reasonable, uh, to have this as part of the conversation. I see the benefit of having a Pioneer Program, but I want to see a comprehensive package and those guardrails I talked about, um, before, you know, going from 60 to 80 is, uh, maybe giveaway is a loaded term, but it's a part of the conversation about what, what, what's the city's investment in the broadest sense of the word investment for what they get in back. And as, as we move forward, I find having to be part of the conversation, but I want to see what it all looks like when it all gets put together. City Administrator, do you have what you were looking for from the committee this evening?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair. What I think we'll do is we will come back at your September meeting, um, with, uh, more fleshed out, uh, guidelines for the, uh, the fund to see if that, and I appreciate the, the detailed comments that you gave, we should be able to take those and, uh, flesh those out more and bring back to you that. Um, I think that the Pioneer Program looks like it is, you're in concurrence with the administration's recommendations. I think one more touch during committee makes sense. Um, and then the trust fund, uh, allocation, uh, to Arch is a, a budgetary issue, uh, which we'll, uh, discuss with our finance staff and, and sort through the best way. That likely will not come back then to the committee. We'll have, we'll either roll that into a, a budget amendment, uh, in the future and have Chairman March speak to that as appropriate when it comes back. So in September, you'll have additional discussion about the fund and Pioneer Programs and that'll be, give us enough time then to take it, one last stop to the committee as a whole. Uh, and if there's concurrence there, uh, whatever council actions require, we'll follow.
Sounds good. You've gotten head, head nods from the committee. That all sounds good. Um, I want to thank my fellow, uh, committee members, members of the public. You know, there's times where this, this body is accused of, like, we come up to the dais and we just have a unanimity and all seven of us are sort of on the same page. So it's thrilling to be able to, um, upon occasion, uh, sort of whittle things, uh, in public view because that's how we're, you know, we all, we're all, uh, trying to do the best thing for the city and folks certainly got that this evening. And with that, uh, I will say that this meeting is adjourned.